Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Henderson, you have the floor.
J-4B is a fence around a retention pond that was awarded to Troy City, Troy Business, Motor City Fence. And I just want to take a couple of seconds to promote the mittensite and also give kudos to the city and Motor City Fence for actually putting a deal together because we don't see these Troy businesses a lot in the J section. So I thought I'd be remiss if I didn't at least take the opportunity. So it's good to see Troy businesses participating in our city.
Thank you very much. Did you want to move the resolution forward?
Yes.
As written?
As written.
Second, moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Slater. Discussion and vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under memorandums and council, future council items, we have a notice of a public hearing to be conducted during the next regularly scheduled council meeting. No, I don't think that is during the next regularly scheduled. It's a special meeting on August 13, 2012, for a tax abatement application requested by U.S. Fairthing Corporation for their expansion at 7:50. Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry. There was something incorrect. There was an inconsistency with the public hearing notice as well as the memo. So that, there is a handout that corrects that.
Oh.
It is actually set for a regular meeting on August 13. Just wanted to make sure that was pointed out.
Okay. So that is scheduled for the next-
Regular.
For the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. We have council referrals. There's no council referrals that I know of. Did anyone want to bring up any items?
Have council referral.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I, since the enactment of our distracted driving ordinance, there's always been one section of that ordinance that has bothered me. It's a three-phase ordinance. The first phase being, and without reading the entire ordinance, but essentially is about texting and driving, which, you know, obviously, we all know the hazards of that, especially with, you know, new drivers and, you know, the distractions they already have. And in addition to that, the state of Michigan is prohibited texting and driving. So we have a lot of mechanisms in place to deal with that. So, you know, again, I don't have any real issues with that. The second phase of this distracted driving ordinance is the physical manipulation or handling of a wireless device in the car. Don't hold your phone while you're talking on the phone. And while there could be an argument made that the act of talking and driving is actually the distraction, I've seen it so many times, I don't object to not holding a device while I drive an automobile. The third paragraph, though, is the one that really is kind of, it's a catch basin for every conceivable thing that could happen inside an automobile. In fact, it starts, "Any action by the driver of a motor vehicle that diverts his or her attention resulting in a failure to use, do, and do care and caution." And the fundamental problem I have with that section of this ordinance, and what I'm looking to do is try to strike that section of the ordinance out of the ordinance, is essentially this. If, you know, if I swat a fly and I divert my hands like this, it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm out of control of my automobile, or I don't have full capability of continuing in a straight line. However, if I cross the line, there's already laws in place that you can't cross a line. I mean, you cannot, you cannot prevent everything inside an automobile from taking place which could potentially result in a hazard. And to that end, I would like to eliminate that paragraph and obviously open it up for conversation.
Okay. So you're proposing the resolution to-
I would propose a resolution to strike the third paragraph of that particular ordinance.
Second, please.
Support.
Discussion? Mayor? Yes?
Mayor, just if I may, the resolution that's printed is to direct us to prepare it. There are some formalistic language that we would need to include before an ordinance could be adopted. So it would not be something that, you wouldn't adopt the ordinance at this meeting. What you would do is direct us to bring it back to you, and then you could take official action on it.
I apologize. That was what I think you had your intention anyway. The resolution needs resolved, but Troy City Council hereby directs city administration to prepare an amendment to chapter 106. Other discussion, Councilman Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to see if Chief Mayor could come up and kind of give him, give us a little opinion from his vantage point. Firstly, I got a real problem with taking this out of there. You know, you see kids doing this, not only kids, adults, every day. And I think Chief Mayor will tell you, they can give them a ticket for reckless driving if they would prefer that, which is a lot more, and a lot more punitive than what this is. I think it's got to be in there, but I'll leave it up to Chief Mayor or his group back there. So just like to hear from them.
Chief Mayor? Good evening.
Evening, Mayor and Council. To kind of just broadly address the points brought up by Councilman Campbell. By policy, the Troy Police Department has dictated to the officers that they not write violations for these three sections unless they see some overt action. So it isn't merely seeing somebody talking on the phone, or swatting on a fly, or eating a pizza, or driving down the road with both hands holding a book while driving a car on I-75. We have to see some other behavior that causes, makes it obvious that it's a problem. So if we see them swerving in their lane, if we see them making a wide turn, or doing something that shows they were distracted from what they should be doing, which is driving, then they can write this violation. It's another tool for a police officer to write a violation to address problems they see on the roadway. They could write for reckless driving, they could write for careless driving, there's other violations. But what it does is it gives police officers more tools to specifically address distracted driving. It's our belief, and in talking to the Traffic Improvement Association, that this is a way to address this problem that we're seeing with distracted driving, where people are not paying attention to what they're doing when they're operating a motor vehicle, they're doing other things in the car. We've talked about this at length in the past. We have data that's available. We haven't been writing that many tickets for this. Our ticket output in this area has gone down as the officers are complying with our policy.
Captain Redmond, did you have something you wanted to add?
I'm here to support the chief.
Okay, good. Congratulations.
Approximately 6,000 tickets we've written this year, less than 10 have been written for distracted driving, other behavior.
Have you made stops, warnings? Have there been a number of stops and warnings as a result of this?
Tickets themselves issued were between six to 10 tickets so far this year for bad distracted driving, other offense. So we don't use it relatively at all.
Okay. You have Proton McGinnis?
I have two questions. I remember when we passed this ordinance, and not only did we receive quite a bit of background information, and we had some representatives from the police department that had been working on this for a long period of time, that I think you might even qualify as an expert in the field, because they had done so much work on this. And I would be curious to know if that information has been reviewed by all the council members. I think it was very important for us when we made the decision to add this tool to the police department, and obviously as a precautionary measure for our citizens and keeping our citizens safe. But I think that information might be helpful before we would move forward really making any changes, so that we're all kind of operating from the same baseline. And then obviously, something that's already been touched on, I think, and we had this discussion many times, about the fact that there are laws available for careless driving and reckless driving. But in the chance that you would be in a situation where both of your hands were removed from the wheel, and it did cause you to do something in your, in your driving that would warrant a ticket, I think most of the citizens would probably prefer to have this with a much smaller penalty than a reckless driving ticket, which is going to greatly impact their license and their pocketbook. So, and just for the record, this has been something that's been in place for a while. We had a very lengthy educational period and a warning period, so that our citizens and the people that were traveling in the city of Troy knew what was going on, and were well aware before there was any sort of penalty. But since we put this into effect, really, the things that we've seen on council have been positive, I think, in terms of feedback. And we've recently had inquiries from other communities that are looking to do something similar, and want to know how we made it work here in the city of Troy. We've also received awards for taking these measures. So I think that, that whole composite of information really should be available to everybody before we just take action to remove that. So.
You raised many, many good points. Those are very comprehensive. We do have all that information available. We can reissue that information. The lieutenant that you're referring to, Lieutenant Livingston, retired from the police department. He's very instrumental in putting the, gathering the data and all the background information that was used when we presented this to council the first time. He has a lot of data that we still have available. We can provide all that data. We did receive awards from the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police for this, and the Traffic Improvement Association is very happy with our ordinance, and they're using it as a model with other agencies.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, Mayor. I believe this was passed in July 2010. I was on council at that time, but unfortunately, that was a meeting I did not make, so I did not have an opportunity to vote on this at the time. The following meeting I did attend, and I believe I stated that I would not have supported this ordinance simply because of that section. I don't think it's been abused at all. I think you guys are doing a great job. I do think this is overly restrictive and unnecessary. This police chief, this staff will make sure that this is not abused. If we leave this on the books, we don't know what the next generation will bring. I don't know. Right now, I trust everyone out there that's enforcing this. I don't think it's being abused at all. But I believe this section in there gives tremendous amount of leadway for stopping drivers, for any action by the driver that diverts his or attention, resulting in failure to use, do, care, and caution. It doesn't say you have to cross a yellow line or whatever. It's a judgment call. Right now, that judgment call is being, I think, enforced properly. But I think it gives too much, too much authority to pull people over.
Councilman Slater?
Well, I don't think anybody would be surprised that, I think it would be, I think it would be terrible to take this section out of this. You might as well delete the whole ordinance, in my opinion, but that's my opinion. I think it's exactly the opposite of what Councilman Fleming said, in that it's important to have this kind of language in an ordinance, so that you don't have to write somebody for careless driving or reckless driving for the exact same behavior that is listed in here. It's six points. You get your license suspended for a year, I believe, for reckless driving. Careless is four points, the last I reviewed it. I think it's, you know, when there's a pet sitting on your lap, and you're driving down the street, and you want to pull him over and issue him a careless or, I think they would prefer to get a ticket written like this. And I don't think, because somewhere down in the future, somebody might abuse that, is a good reason to take this out of our laws. If we get to a point, in my opinion, where we think that that's happening, and quite frankly, it's very obvious that our police department is not doing that, when you have issued six citations in a year and a half, basically, for this, these violations, and if I could, isn't this, isn't this a very important ordinance to have at accident scenes? So that-
You say the last part?
At accident scenes, when somebody may have been doing like something in this, in this ordinance, it's much easier for the officer to write under this ordinance, preferably, than reckless or careless driving. Is that, is that correct?
I'll let Captain Redmond, when he was, address that. When he was Lieutenant Redmond, he was in charge of traffic safety, and so he can give more timely response to that.
Captain Redmond?
Mark? I think it's a great tool for you at an accident-
What it gives the officer is the option.
Could you, could you-
I'm sorry. What it does, it gives the officer the option. If he sees the person driving down the street, that is the typical comment of, well, they were eating a McDonald's hamburger while trying to dip the chicken nuggets with the sauce and the french fries, and they bounce off the curb and go up on the curb and strike an object or something, it gives them an option. Was the driving careless? Yes. But was it, was it caused by, was this caused by the distracted driving behavior? The stupid things people do when they should be driving the car, that they don't think about it, that you can't do all that at the same time. And sometimes, that type of ticket has a better effect. It's really no punishment. It's a fine, it's a reminder, and you can walk away saying, well, I'm one of the few people that got one of the tickets in the city of Troy, but my driving was pretty dumb. And I think it does better than the other tickets, where it tend to be more punishing for the same type of mistaken behavior kind of thing, so.
I would add to that from a, from a data collection standpoint, for accidents, the cleaner the data, if we're able to say this accident was caused from distracted driving, the better it is for the Traffic Improvement Association to tell us what behaviors we should be looking for. So if we have particular accidents, rear collisions caused by distracted driving, we can target that type of accident, that type of accident-causing behavior. So in that sense, from a data collection, which allows us then to allocate our resources in the best way, it is better to have clean data.
If I could just follow up. I would assume the police department supports having this section in this ordinance?
We, the police department likes this ordinance. It's a good tool for us to have.
Could I ask a lot of department the same question?
This, this ordinance was drafted with our assistance, and I am satisfied that it does meet all of the constitutional scrutiny that it would be required to meet.
It's a good tool also?
We have not seen instances where it's been abused at all, and certainly, there is the ability for us to review them in the, in the district court proceedings.
Councilman Henderson?
Just a couple of follow-ups. First and foremost, if somebody is eating chicken nuggets, eating a hamburger, and dipping at the same time, and it hit a curb, they need a reckless or careless driving ticket. That, in my opinion. You're, you're the professionals. I don't care if they get a six-point ticket and, you know, pay fees for that. Some people can, can handle more behind the wheel than others can. I've been in professional sales my entire life, and I live inside a car. So I, you know, certainly, as a police officer, you also live inside a car. I'm sure there are a lot of things that you can do as a, as a daily task simultaneous that other people couldn't possibly tend to while they're behind a wheel. So I think there's a, there is a difference there. Why have an ordinance we don't enforce 100%? I just don't. That fundamentally really grinds at me. If, if I'm driving down the street, and I'm doing the same thing as another person's doing, give us both the same ticket. Don't give me leniency in the other or not. Which leads me to another question, is if you give a warning or a ticket, what determines whether you ticket somebody or just warn them? I mean, is there-
Officer discretion.
Okay. And that's, that's where, I think that's the biggest problem I have. If the officer is having a bad day, or, you know, maybe the kid that he gets, he's pulling over, has a bad day, words exchanged, and then all of a sudden, it becomes escalated. I just don't, I don't see, I think that has a tendency to, to become a bigger issue. And, and I just don't like having that much discretion thrown out there on an ordinance that just is, again, an attempt to catch everything that could conceivably happen in a car. You can respond if you like.
Certainly.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Mayor?
Just in response to that, the tenets of policing in a free society is founded a lot on officer discretion. The ability of the police officer, and that we give them the power and the authority that they have, they operate, they have to be very much independent, and we have to rely on officer discretion. If we don't rely on officer discretion, we have a lot of problems. We employ very highly, highly trained, professional police officers, and I have very little concern regarding officer discretion there. I would argue that most people want officer discretion. They want that officer to be able to listen to them. That's why in, in the state of Michigan, you don't see the acceptance of red light cameras that just write tickets at red lights. If you run a red light, if you follow the argument of discretion, everyone gets a ticket. With officer discretion, the officer is able to talk to that person, and see if there's other, other behaviors, or something else that led to that red light violation. He's able to look at all the factors involved. So we're really going into a total different area with this. Officer discretion is a good thing to have. It's what you pay your Troy police officers to have.
Councilman Teetz?
Rather than try to hash this out without any background data or anything, I think it's, it's okay to have this discussion and some sort of resolution put forward, and at that point, we can see some data, and I would think that would speak for itself. We can go forward from there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
We had discussion, we-
There's no vote, there's no motion out here.
Yes, there was a resolution to, yes.
I'm going to make a motion to postpone this item until next meeting, so that the data that was provided to the past council could be provided to this council, so they can make a more, maybe uneducated, decision based on some of the data that might be supplied and a, and a report from the police department. And-
Is there a second for postponement?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, a vote, Councilman Henderson?
Additionally, I respect the fact that we need more information. I'd like to see some of the data from the original vote. Again, Mr. Fleming was against it. That's one of the reasons I kind of looked at this. You know, I did a little bit of research on my own. I'd like to see that data. I'd also like to see current data, and I asked for this and was given it by Chief Mayor when I first became a councilperson. But I'd like to see the stats for people that have been pulled over for distracted driving, maybe even break it down, you know, between phones, texting, and distracted. So maybe a more complete report.
So we have a motion on the table to postpone this resolution. Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Proton McGinnis. A vote? Mrs. Bittner?
It was actually seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
My apologies, I thought, okay, they both did, but we'll go with Councilman Campbell. A vote, please.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll postpone the issue until we have more data. Now, is that indefinite postponement, or is it postponed till the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Okay, it's postponed till the next regularly scheduled meeting? All right. So then we'll move on to council comments. Is there anyone who wanted to make any comments? Councilman Teetz?
Yes. Thank you, Jim. Couple of things. The, the state's school districts have changed some of their procedures, and I thought these procedures and how they're interacting are some positive changes to help, just like their amount of data they now put on the web as far as salaries, and what money's being spent on lobbyists and so forth, is helpful for the public to know. What I've also learned is now the school districts are no longer responsible for the withholding of dues and association fees related to collective bargaining agreements. And essentially, the, the school district is no longer in the business of being a collection agent and dispersing those funds as part of their business operations. And so I would like to know if that is a feasible thing for the city to do. Obviously, it doesn't apply to current collective bargaining agreements, but future collective bargaining agreements could include that provision, like they do at Troy schools and every other school district, public school district in the state.
You had a question?
And this, I guess the first one is to see if there's any other interest in investigating that, and so we can ask the staff to review, review that. So I'm looking for anyone that would be-
I would be interested in that information.
All right.
Okay. I'm not seeing four heads here yet.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I would ask why, why we need to do that in Troy, with the limited employees that we have in associations?
You know, that's a good question, because any activity that's out of the, the exact scope of what city government should be doing, our, our relation to the citizens, I don't think is something that we should be doing. If individuals want to join association, unions, or organize however they want, they can run those organizations in their own way, according to whatever rules they set up internally, and we shouldn't be part of collecting and dispersing dues or fees. That's up to a private organization.
I would agree with that.
I do, too.
So there's four. Any other comments?
Second question, or second issue, again, Michigan's school districts have also changed their behavior, and the state actually required that all school districts have an 80-20 plan. And this is something we talked about before, 80-20 being that the district pays for 80% of the healthcare costs, and the employee pays for 20%. Now, I'm not regimented on it being 80-20. It certainly could be better, and I think we need to investigate things like HSAs or things like that. But I would also be interested in seeing if there's interest in having a resolution about setting that as a standard for all collective bargaining agreements going forward. And I think certainly, there are many unclassified exempt employees, and perhaps we could set a time, a timeframe when the first, when the first collective bargaining agreement comes open, again, that we would set that as the new policy for the city of Troy. And I think the reason for this is twofold. Number one, I think it helps hold some of our, our costs as a city under control, and I think, I think that's an important part. Secondly, I think folks don't appreciate, to receive full Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance here in the city, a city employee pays $20 per pay period, or, and I should, I should say roughly 20. I'll probably be wrong in these, but between 20 and 40, let's say. And that's a, that's a fair, a fair deal that's been agreed on over time. And I think we need to look into this and investigate a little bit more, and see if that really makes sense, and if that compares to what is going on in the rest of, the rest of the economy, and if that can actually make sense. So when I heard about that at the school district, I thought, it's worth the investigation. And again, I'd be curious if anyone would be interested in learning more or hearing any more, so.
The next collective bargaining agreements begin in April of 2013. Is that correct? April of 2013? I believe.
To the best of my knowledge, it is somewhat off from now, you know, several months.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, I think what, understanding Councilman Teetz correctly, is he wants to do the research before we get into collective bargaining, just so that council knows, and we're apprised of what other communities are doing and so forth. So I'd support that. You don't want to wait until we get into the bargaining, you want to know before.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
We may not change a thing. We don't know, but we want to be informed.
Right. Although I don't have a vote, I would suggest that looking into it is probably better than making a directive to go directly-
Right.
Into that.
Right.
In that we may need various options when it comes to bargaining, instead of being so, so strict with it. But if we come back with a report on that, to let you know how the impacts of hiring employees, retaining employees, and that sort of thing, I think you would probably like to see it that way.
But wouldn't we like to wait until we have a new city manager before we do this? I think it's kind of an important component to get the involvement of the new city manager, rather than taking time with our wonderful interim city manager. Is that fair? Councilman Teetz?
I actually would prefer to, to begin today, for a couple of reasons. Number one, we are the policymaking body, and I respect the role of the city manager, and I'm sure we'll receive data from our interim city manager and ongoing, but I think we need to be clear, our role is a policymaking body. Secondly, I don't see what the harm is to start the process.
I agree.
Okay. Councilman Slater?
I don't think I agree with that. I think we have, we have a full plate with administration right now, trying to organize having a new city manager. If you look at our, our schedule for the next two months, I think it's, it's full. I, I think we can wait till we get a new city manager on board, so if we're talking about negotiation, I think it's things that need to be done in a, in a special meeting, not, if we're going to be talking about the way to negotiate. I don't think you do that by passing resolutions mandating how you negotiate contracts. I think that's just the unbelievably wrong way to do things. But I'm okay with collecting data and seeing how we compare, and what the impact would be and things like that, but I can't even imagine passing resolutions to dictate how to negotiate contracts. That would, that would break them, break them down completely, in my opinion. But I, I think we should wait. That's my opinion, till we get a new city manager.
Madam Mayor, may I add one extra thing? The HR department consists of two people. And as of about a week from now, it'll consist of one person-
And as of about a week from now, it will consist of one person due to a sick leave situation for about six weeks. So if we could say we will start looking but not expect a full report for a while, I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you for your input. Is there consensus to wait? I believe if we have a show of hands, I'd like to wait myself. Councilman Slater? Councilman Fleming, your opinion?
I don't think it needs to be the top priority of our HR department, but certainly anytime they would have to start looking into this, and the new city manager comes on, we can continue. I don't think we're asking for a report next week, but just to start the process.
Councilman Henderson?
I'm in the same camp. It's good, information is good to be obtained as soon as you can, but understanding the constraints that we have with personnel, but certainly I don't think whether Mr. Culpepper or the new manager is in place is going to be that big of an impact on information gathering and assessment.
Well, I believe it would be important for us actually to wait. I don't want to burden Mr. Culpepper with any undue work that he starts, and then a new city manager has to come in and take over halfway. I think it's really important for us to start with our new city manager. That's my opinion, and I guess we'll just move forward from that. Is there any other comments?
On that subject, no.
Yes, Councilman Campbell?
Not on that subject, no.
I'm so sorry.
Not on that subject, I'm all set.
Okay, a new subject?
I have another subject.
All right.
Okay. This is in relation to our meeting last week that we had. There was an exchange between Mayor Daniels and Councilman Slater with regards to the final vote to keep the library open six days and have it closed on Friday. And to clarify, I just want to put the facts from the record into the record of tonight so we don't have to really be having this conversation again. Our meeting was on November 28, 2011. It was Agenda Item I V. Mayor Daniels did propose a resolution for a seven-day operation for the Troy Public Library, which was seconded by Council Henderson. The cost of that proposal was $1,330,688 through the life of the library millage. The discussions between the council concluded that the city could not afford that large cost increase. A resolution to substitute Mayor Daniels' resolution was made by Councilman Slater for a six-day library operation with a closure on Friday. I seconded that resolution. The additional cost at this point was $35,000 per year. A vote to substitute the resolution for a six-day versus the seven-day proposed by Mayor Daniels was voted on. The yes votes were Slater, Campbell, Fleming, McGinnis. The noes were Teetz, Daniels, and Henderson. The motion passed. Then the vote came for the resolution, I V B, which was the proposal for a six-day operation for the Troy Library with closure on Friday. It was moved by Slater and seconded by myself again. The yes votes were Teetz, Campbell, Fleming, Henderson, McGinnis, Slater. The only no vote was Mayor Daniels. The motion was carried. So in issuance through that conversation last week, Mr. Slater, or Councilman Slater was dead on when he said that you, Mayor Daniels, did not and cannot stand there and say that you supported for a six-day operation of the library.
I never said I supported a six-day operation. I supported not closing the library on Friday. You are trying to make the insinuation that I voted to not open the library on Saturday, and that is incorrect, and I'll stand by my statement. I voted the way I voted because I wanted not to have the library closed on Friday. Thank you so much for bringing that up again. Is there any other comments?
Really not.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Portem McGinnis?
I was asked to make an announcement regarding a current event that's going on. Gleaners Community Food Bank of Southeastern Michigan is inviting the community to participate in the Hunger Free Summer Food Fight for Kids now through July 27 of this year. The food fight's a contest between businesses to collect food and dollars to help feed hungry children. Our citizens are invited to contribute canned and dry goods to supply the food bank, which distributes to over 500 shelters, soup kitchens, and food pantries to help area families in need. The 2011 food fight raised more than 11,800 pounds of food and more than $30,000. I want to make sure that the residents know that they can drop off donations at City Hall right here, the Troy Public Library, and the Troy Community Center. Any monetary donations can be dropped off to Cindy Stewart with the Community Affairs Department right here in City Hall, and all checks should be made out to the Gleaners Community Food Bank of Southeastern Michigan.
Thank you. There'll be a State of the City address free of charge for Troy residents on September 20 at the Troy Community Center at 7:00 PM. This is an opportunity, I hope, to welcome our new city manager and to thank our interim city manager, Mr. Culpepper, for the fine job that he has done in this interim period, and wish him and his wife a good vacation. They have a vacation planned in late September. I also am going to have my son home for leave, so I'll be happy to introduce him to the community at that time. There's much to be discussed regarding the city of Troy. I'm looking forward to the event, and I hope that everyone will put it on your calendars so that you can join us. Is there any other comments? Councilman Slater?
Well, that's the first time I heard that. I have a question for the city attorney. Is that the procedure that we follow for setting up State of the City? Does the mayor just choose to do that on her own? Or has that normally been discussed among council, or how does that typically happen?
I'm at a loss as far as, you know, so I just don't have the background to be able to provide that.
That's okay. I think it's maybe something we need to discuss in the rules at the study session. Thanks.
Mr. Culpepper?
Madam Mayor, and Councilman Slater, to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe there's anything stated in any rules or any details. There's some traditions as to when those State of the City messages are given, but we have not found anything that governs that specifically.
Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I've been on the council for six years, and I don't think I've ever had a mayor ask me if they could give a State of the City address. I know what the protocol is, but I've never been asked. I don't think the council's ever voted on a State of the City address. That's something the mayor decides. There may be specific time periods that it's historically done, but if the mayor wants to give a State of the City on September the 15th...
20th.
Or 20th, whatever the date is, I personally don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's something we need to discuss personally, and...
Excuse me?
I think it's something we need to discuss, and I'd be happy to talk about it in the study session. Thanks.
Are there any other comments? We can move to reports now? Did you have any?
No, reports.
Reports?
Yeah.
Do you have a comment on the reports?
I was really impressed again with the Building Department report, Report N 2A, just summarizing some things there. Year-to-date, June 2012 compared to prior year, the permits issued by the Building Department of 4,011 compared to 680 for the same time period last year, the change of 3,331 reports are almost a 500% increase in the permits issued, if I'm reading that correctly. As far as the value of those permits, they are up 144% from $58,900,24,100. So that's all good news. Things are happening. People are filing for permits. The value of those permits, the building permits are up, so I'm really encouraged by that. I think we've got a long ways to go, but certainly I think Troy is turning the corner as far as activity in the Building Department. So I'm really pleased to see that and really appreciate that Building Department giving us those reports. I think it's good news.
I wanted to mention that there was a zoning board of appeals hearing on a variance request by the Northwood Community Foundation regarding the Troy Family Days annual event that'll be held on September 13 through September 16. There's information on this great event on their website. That's troyfamilydays.com. It would be encouraging for you to visit that website and volunteer. I volunteer to help with admissions. Are there any other comments? Councilman Fleming? Councilman Slater?
I noticed, I think it's N 6, oh six, the report on the fireworks regulations. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I think we need to do something. I don't think I'm in favor of rewriting our ordinance at this time, because I've been reading in the paper recently that I think every city in the state has probably let their representatives know how angry they are at what was done in Lansing. And I think until, I think they're going to go back, and I think they're going to try to rework this and maybe make some more sense out of it, and then maybe we need to do something with our ordinance. But I certainly wouldn't be opposed to some sort of a resolution back to our representatives telling them that we think this needs to be reworked.
I was thinking of a proclamation for us to prepare to send to the state legislators to let them know our opinions on the fireworks.
Would a resolution or a proclamation...
Madam Mayor, I would recommend if you wanted to support changes to the current law, that you do that by resolution. However, you know, I'm not sure if you want to specify what things you'd like to have changed, or if you just want a very general one saying, we support change this, you know, that there were, there are some holes in the law that need to be fixed. If that's the desire of a majority of council, we can bring back a resolution for the next meeting.
That's where I was, that's where I was going. That's what I would like to do. And let's see what they do, and if they don't do something, then maybe we can look at what some of the other cities have done with their own ordinances, but that's where I'd like to start, if I get a consensus.
I agree with that.
Agreed.
Does everyone agree with that?
I agree with that.
Councilman Teetz?
Currently, though, we have ordinances that cover everything that would happen with fireworks, essentially. If you hear something loud at night, either a dog or fireworks, you can call the police and say such and such is setting off fireworks next door, wherever. And I guess the council's concern is that it's late at night and that there's no overall ordinance on. Is that... Just trying to understand the concern. The concern is, because it's all covered under current ordinances...
Well...
And our concern is that people are setting them off, and those people aren't courteous? I mean...
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson, if you could...
Go ahead.
Just a follow-up. I, we had this discussion at the last, the last meeting, and I think we talked about some of our concerns, and I asked if we could put something on the website. I don't know if that's been done or not yet regarding fireworks. But we talked about the age issue. I think Councilman Fleming brought that up. We talked about the time of night, and we do have some ordinances that are on the books, such as nuisance and littering, but I don't think those are the ordinances that we want to have to use. We're looking for them to tie up some loopholes in the state law, and then if we need to maybe make it a little stricter around a local ordinance, I think that's what the consensus was last time, I think.
Madam Mayor? Mayor Portem McGinnis?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll defer to the members of council.
I was just going to say, I think part of the issue came because there was a change in the state law. Some of the ordinances that we had, ordinance provisions that we had relied on were superseded, and so we're really at the mercy of what the state law is right now. So what we had originally talked about was looking at our own local ordinances to see what little spots we had left that we could try to control. But I think the bigger issue really is that until we forward some of our concerns that have occurred as a result of the changes in the state law, there isn't a lot that we can do at the local level, because right now there's 10 days a year that they have the ability to use and possess and shoot off the fireworks, and they can also do it the day before and the day after. And that's really where we saw some of the problems that our local laws wouldn't be able to fix because we couldn't supersede the state law. So I think maybe what we're trying to do is just send some of our concerns to Lansing and hope that they'll consider them when they're reconsidering the new law, I think. And then if there's something that they tweak or don't tweak after we see that final product, then we can look at our local ordinances again.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I think Chief Mayor addressed this at the last meeting as well. Some of my concerns were, I think, like-to-like timeframes. There was an increase of about 300 phone calls, mostly asking for, you know, what is the ordinance? And if that turns into, hey, my next-door neighbor's shooting fireworks off at 1:00 AM, I don't think we have the manpower to really do much about it. So I am a proponent of sending this back to Lansing, let them figure it out, fix the problems. But I also think, more firmly than that, we need to give them a checklist of, you know, this is what we'd like to see, rather than just have them, you know, you just can't leave it on them to try to fix a law for every community unless we guide them a little bit as to, you know, here's what we need.
The mayor of Ferndale has made outreach to the South Oakland Mayor Association members, saying that he's going to write something, and so we gave input to him. So the mayors are going to have some kind of a proclamation or a statement to the state legislators to give them our direction, and I'd be happy to share that with everyone when I get that. Any other comments? Councilmember Teetz?
So I guess I don't know what we're asking the state to do. We're asking them to prohibit fireworks on holidays and designate holidays. I don't think I'm asking for anything out of the ordinary. I'm just asking for, what is this proclamation actually going to say? Because, or pardon me, resolution.
Mayor? I think we're asking the Law Department to put together a resolution...
In generalities.
In generalities, bring it back to us, see what, see what we like or dislike, or if we want to change a little bit, and then we can take a look at it and go from there. But I think in generalities, and if we want to get more specific when we see it, then we can communicate with the Law Department, I think.
It really is incumbent upon the state, though, to make some clarifications in their legislation. I think that's where we're all at, and we all agree upon that. We have a study session?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilman Fleming. I'm sorry.
There's one, excuse me, there's one more report that I'd like to bring attention to, and that's N 02B, and it has to do with the library and the library strategic planning process. There was a meeting held on Monday, June the 25th. There are notes from that meeting in the subject report, N 02B. And there's another meeting scheduled, I believe, for August, and this committee made notes. What I want to really express an opinion on, there are a number of things discussed, but one of the documents provided on page two talks about building a business model, redefining the library and communication. Specifically, I'm interested in the business model. I don't want this to fall through the cracks, is when this team's working on it. And read the excerpt from the business model on page two. It says, "What has been done to implement a sustainable revenue-generating business model that reduces taxpayer reliance? How do we get secure funding and new revenue streams? How can we create a better funding model, business model, for library with declining money? Will the library users support a future millage and referendum? Problem of users who aren't voters." There were some notes on there. I'm just wanting to make sure that this committee, and I commend all those people that are taking the time to be on this committee and doing the hard lifting, to not let that fall through the cracks, but two, in this process, to really look at a business model and alternative revenue streams. I know, Mr. Miller, you put that report out along with Kathy Russell. I appreciate you providing the report. I think it's a good start, but I really want that business model to be part of the deliverable there, and I think the council, when we talked about that, that was a component that we were all interested in, as well as redefining the library and communicating to the public what the library's doing. Do you have a comment on that?
Madam Mayor? Just a quick comment. I do say on that committee, I'll make sure that that is reviewed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is a study item, and that's to discuss the recommended changes to the rules of procedure. There are no closed sessions, so I'd like to thank each and every one of you for joining the meeting this evening. If you'd like to join us in the study session, please feel free to do so. If you don't, have a good evening, and this meeting is closed this session. We'll meet in the boardroom.
Mr. Savage, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, James.
Maybe somebody could read that for me.
Thank you. Here, gentlemen.
What them tigers?
They made a trade today.
Did it?
You been here?
No.
What they did, oh, I don't know. I know some prospecting some players, they got a guy with a weird name.
That narrows it down.
I'm not that big of, I don't care too much about baseballs. Well, they made a trade. They got rid of three players, one runs a.
They got rid of Turner, the young kid. Another thing I have to Google tomorrow.
And they waved there, and the Lions cut Barry.
To offer him an opportunity to present his issues on the rules of procedure changes that he would like to see made.
If you turn to page two, section seven, order of business. Currently, where it says, "Public comment," I would ask, so we have that public comment related to items on the agenda. We'll go back in just a moment to talk about the details of each of these spots. And then between K and L, so that would be before council referrals, we'd have public comment on items not on agenda. Then, I'm not gonna be able to jump back and forth between all the different spots where we're excited as far as time and so forth, but essentially, in each of these locations, it would be about three minutes. Public items on the agenda area, people would need to state what item they're speaking about, or items, they could speak about one, or three, or eight, and to speak on those items. And they'll also need to state whether they're a co-resident, co-business owner, or a resident elsewhere. Then, on the public comments not on the agenda, which would be before council referrals, the same procedure, three minutes, they obviously wouldn't have to state what agenda item they're speaking on, but they still would need to say whether they're resident, non-resident, or co-business owner. And as far as when the statement that is currently read, could be read, it could probably be read once, unless we read it twice, before, and I'm thinking read it before the initial public comments on the agenda items. And people could speak at one, or they could speak at both of the spots in the agenda. And I guess open for discussion.
Discussion?
Are you suggesting three minutes instead of five minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes instead of five.
Correct.
On all, or only one second?
Three items on the agenda, and then another three on, not on the agenda.
So if an individual wanted to speak on two items, you'd have a minute and a half on one each, or three on each agenda item that they want to speak on?
If they wanted to speak on three items, they would have three minutes. If they wanted to speak on 12 items, they would have three minutes.
Total. Thank you. Councilman Slater?
I really, I don't have any issues, per se, with that, just as background, and maybe Lori can help me, is at least the previous council, the reason that we moved public comment up front was to not make it inconvenient for people to have to wait till 10, 11, 12 o'clock to speak, because there are times when the agenda is bigger than it has been since you've been on council. And that was one of the reasons that we moved it forward, as a convenience to the residents so they didn't have to hang around. A lot of residents have children that they need to get to bed, and they like to get home before 9:00 to speak. But in light of kind of what's been going on in the past few years, I have to say that we haven't been able to get to our own business for quite some time, and I, I think I, I think I have to support you, but with, what's bothering me a little bit also is that not everybody is signing up to speak, and they know they're gonna speak. And they're waiting to get to be the last one to speak. And it's obvious to me, and I think it may be obvious to everybody at this table, that that's what's going on. I would like, I would like to see you have to sign up to speak. Okay? And get these people to put their names down, and put whether they're a resident or a non-resident somewhere on the kiosk there. But I would prefer that if somebody's gonna speak, when they come into that council chamber, they should know whether they're gonna speak or not. And if they don't sign up, catch us next time. I don't know what the feeling is in here, but I'm, you know, it's getting to the point where we're getting five, 10 people sometime at the end that, they don't like what they heard, so they want to jump up and speak.
Councilman Fleming?
I agree with you, Councilman Slater. And the suggestion I have to really enforce that is not have them sign up at a kiosk, because some people have difficulty with that anyway. You have a paper card that they fill out, and they give to the city clerk at the beginning of the meeting. They put that in, and you have that, it's a colored card, it's out there for them, they're made aware the card's there, and they do fill out whether they're resident, business, or non-resident. They have that card, the city clerk has that, and it's separated already whether it's items on the agenda or not on the agenda. So you separate it, and you have that. But there just needs to be a cutoff time as to when those people can turn those cards in. Only people that speak, the people that the city clerk has the card for. Now, that's a model that the school board, I've seen work effectively at the school board meetings, and they have people come, listen to them. The other thing they don't do is they don't respond. I like the fact that we can respond to public comment. I think that's important. I wouldn't take that component out of it. But I do believe having people know they're coming to the meeting, they're gonna speak, they fill out, they have a subject, they're, they're ready, they have their notes ready, and the city clerk knows who it is prior to the meeting they turn in. Just a suggestion.
Madam McGinnis?
I have a couple of different comments that I prepared, you know, for tonight, knowing that we had the opportunity to review our rules of procedure, but I'll just stick with the two things that we're talking about right now so we can make a decision and move on. But I would be willing to agree to dividing this up in the way that you're proposing, where it's three minutes at the beginning before we handle our regular business, where people can speak to items specifically on the agenda, and then three minutes before we have council referrals and comments, which I'll address in another comment. And to set it up that way, and to really try to get the flow of the meeting going so that we're getting information from people before we're making decisions on regular business items and consent items, and then we're hearing from them again if they would like to talk to us about something that we then have the opportunity to put forward as potential business on a future, future agenda. So I would be willing to do that. I do want to have some clarification, or just at least put it out there and see what responses from other council members. And I'll use an example from tonight, because, you know, we want to make people feel welcome to come and speak with us, and the way that it's set up now, they've got five minutes, they could go off and say whatever they want and feel as though they're being heard. If we're gonna set it up this way, we have to be very diligent about making sure that this policy is followed. And now, as it's been, we've had some really contentious issues, and sometimes it's difficult for us to cut somebody off while they're speaking because we feel that what they're saying is out of line. So we're taking this a step further now, and it's really, you know, the mayor's responsibility or the clerk's responsibility, which I don't think it should be, but it is the leader of the meeting to really make sure that this is being followed. And I was just thinking, there was someone that made comments tonight where it was, to Councilman Teetz, she was congratulating you on bringing this up because she thought it was a valid point. And then within the same conversation, it was talking about the potential for the automat and some public art. So we can see how people come and speak to us, and that they have a lot that they want to throw out there. So this is really gonna take some leadership for us to make this work and make it be effective. And so I want to make sure that there's buy-in from everybody, but also you, because a lot of that responsibility will fall to you, and I don't want to set you up to fail by creating something that we can't, that we really can't make an effective tool. So I want to put that out there. I absolutely would support having people sign in. Both of those things are fairly big changes to the way that we've conducted our business meetings for the last two half years I've been here. So not only are we gonna have to change seven, but we are gonna have to change 17, which is. And so I want to make sure that there's buy-in from everybody, but also you, because a lot of that responsibility will fall to you. And I don't want to set you up to fail by creating something that we can't, that we really can't make an effective tool. So I want to put that out there. I absolutely would support having people sign in. Both of those things are fairly big changes to the way that we've conducted our business meetings for the last two half years I've been here. So not only are we going to have to change seven, but we are going to have to change 17, which is the notice to the members of the public on what we're doing to get public comment from them. And so we're going to be very, have to be very clear about the changes. We're going to probably have to say it about 10,000 times. And if we're going to tell people that they need to be there and sign up before they can speak to us, we've got to make absolutely sure that that information is publicized. So that, you know, we can, even if we want to, I don't, I don't know how we can do this, but, you know, make sure that there's an opportunity at least for a few meetings for people to get the flow of it before they come there and find that the policy has changed. So on those issues, those are my thoughts. I'd be willing to do them both, but I think it's going to take buy-in from everybody. And it's also going to take a really well-thought-out publicity plan so that we can make those changes without people upset.
Councilman Fleming, I have a little bit of concern with bringing paper back into a system. We've got a really nice kiosk out there. And Cindy Stewart is very helpful to have people sign up. She helps them, she shows them how to sign in. I, I think that that's a workable system that we have. I like the changes, they're kind of consistent with what I tried to bring forward six months ago. So I'm certainly supportive of it and I would not have a problem making sure that people stay on their agenda item. I don't have a problem with that. Councilman Henderson?
I like, I like the, the point that you brought up. Somebody can go from, you know, one topic to the next, to the next, and get kind of scattered. And it's, it's real easy to look at somebody as they're talking and they're delivering one message. And then all of a sudden they veer off and then the vitriol kind of takes a turn. And it's, it's easy to cut somebody like that off where, where you don't necessarily agree with what they're saying and so forth. But then, you know, somebody that's giving you kudos like Mr. Teetz here tonight on this, you know, letting them go on past their three minutes even. So I, you know, it can become a rather cumbersome situation. And I think somebody brought up at the last meeting that, you know, maybe everybody on council would have an equal stake in trying to stop somebody if they go off track or, you know, rather than just relying on the mayor or Mayor Protem or whoever in that situation. You know, just kind of spread the, spread the hardship in trying to make that situation a little more easy to control.
Councilman Teetz?
Certainly will be publicizing the change and so forth. But I still, some degree of faith that people will be able to figure it out. And I think there's a lot of citizens have a big personal interest in seeing this work. And I think a lot of folks are just tired of the city council not doing what the city council is supposed to be doing. And I think, I understand it will, you know, each of us will be responsible for paying attention and certainly jumping in if there happens to be, I have to say, you know, kind of gone off track and you're talking about X, Y, Z now. But I think people also understand they have three minutes, they've got, that certain points they want to get across, they throw on the clock. And I, I think people can be succinct and deliver their points in three minutes. And it'll be, it'll be a little stretching out, but it'll work out, I hope.
Councilman Slater?
I, I agree about the kiosk issue because we've invested money in having a kiosk out there and I really think we should use it. And I don't know that we need to burden the clerk right before the meeting with that. When we have Cindy Stewart out there that's done a great job of trying to get people to use the kiosk. And I think if they know they have to use it, instead of just walking in and sitting down and that they'll be called on later on in the meeting, that hopefully that will get them to use the kiosk. And maybe we can put some signage out there. You must sign up at the kiosk if you are going to speak. I think some signage out there would go a long way. And if you want to have cards out there that they fill out and then give them to Cindy. But I think, I think Cindy's pretty good at getting that kiosk ready and used. And I think if people knew they had to sign up, then I think, I think that that problem maybe would go away of them not using the kiosk.
So then we should add a bullet point to number 17, saying that all persons that wish to speak must sign in at the kiosk?
Well, that's going to be a little too late, I think, when you read that. But I think it needs to be in writing, that that's probably the only place that, I don't know.
Signage and staff, I mean, can be informing as.
Yeah, I think Cindy made a comment.
But I put, I think a sign out there, you must sign in at the kiosk or you won't be allowed to speak. And you must indicate that you're a Troy resident, a business owner, or, we're not looking for anybody's address. We'd like to know if you're a resident. I think that's, I mean, that's too much to ask.
Councilman Fleming?
I think there's a consensus to keep the kiosk, so I'm going to revert back to the paper. My suggestion utilizing the kiosk, that we change the four minutes. It's very clear when you're signing up, you're signing up for public comment for items on the agenda. You're clear and you specify on your name and whether you're resident, business, or non-resident. That's clear. We see that when the person comes up, as well as the agenda items they're speaking on. That's going to require some assistance and handholding and that's fine. And if you're speaking on items that are not on the agenda, perfectly clear, you know, you're only going to be listed there. And you're just going to need some assistance there, but I'm sure that can be accomplished. So we'll accomplish the same thing. But I want to know, I think we want to know who's speaking, name, business, resident, non-resident, and whether it's an agenda or non-agenda, and if it's agenda, specifically which agenda item. So that we're looking at our screens, we know exactly what's coming up, you know?
Do you think that we should even have it more organized so that people speak when the agenda item is opened? Because if we have, let's say we have 15 people that sign up and the first three want to speak about agenda item I four, and the next two want to speak about agenda item I five, and then I six, and then they go back to I four, and then all of a sudden we're getting this steady flow of people talking about all these different agenda items. And then we start moving on to the agenda items and pretty much all that conversation has taken place before we've had a chance to look at the agenda items.
I would assume that, that's why I haven't looked at it. I mean, plus throwing in people that are talking about some three other items. I think do it once and I, and many of us take notes as people are speaking or writing down things.
And considering that on some agendas, we may have 10 things on regular business and 10 things on the consent agenda, to offer someone the opportunity to speak on every item for three minutes.
Well, I'm not suggesting that.
Well, that's the only way we could do it. I mean, if you wanted to make a rule that says they can speak specifically on an agenda item, that at each agenda item to afford those people time to speak. I'm not saying that we're going to have a slew of people that come to speak on 20 different agenda items, but theoretically, we could.
And they have three minutes on each of them.
And then you've got them speaking for an hour, one person for an hour. So I think that this breaks it up enough that you can really differentiate between taking the comments and utilizing them in your decision-making for agenda items and then taking the comments and maybe they spur something for one of us to address it in council comments.
Maybe we could group them into agenda item comments, possibly? I mean, I'm just throwing that out to say, if there are 15 people, the first five people that want to talk about the first agenda item talk one after the other. And then the next five people want to talk about the second agenda item so that at least we're keeping our conversations consistent and together. I'm not sure that we necessarily need that either, but it's just a thought. Councilman Fleming?
I wanted to change to three minutes versus five. Is three minutes enough on agenda items to get the point across? I just asked the question because this is a major change too. From going, not only are we restricting when you talk, for which item you speak on, but the amount of time you have.
But in actuality, we're still giving everyone an opportunity to speak six minutes, so we're giving them more time. Councilman Henderson?
The, the previous council allowed shortening of that amount of time too, if there were.
Right, 13 or more.
Right, which, you know, it seemed like everybody had their point out in three minutes. So I would think if you're concise enough.
I think, I agree.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask a question on if Lori would remember, or maybe, maybe you would remember. When Mr. Hughes and Victor would come to the council meetings, what procedure was followed? Did they speak on every, every item?
Every item.
And what would pitfall, I mean, obviously that's a pitfall by itself, but would allow that? I mean, make sure we don't do that again.
We're just letting them speak for three minutes on, on any item.
So. Madam Mayor, I just would like, we'll, we'll have to implement this, I have a question. You want to say that you have to submit your name, but when is it really cut off? What's your intent? Especially the last comment, someone could be at home, shoot up here so they can make comment at the end. So kind of give us some direction of what you're thinking of on when's, when's the deadline to do it? I mean, I don't really, I don't understand, so we can implement it where you are.
At 7:30, when the meeting starts, the kiosk is shut off. I mean, that seems fair. Attorney General, do you have some comments to make?
Yeah, just a couple of things. And you can basically control, you have the obligation to get the business done in your meetings. And so public comment, you have to allow it, but the Open Meetings Act does not require you to go on for hours to do that. So as long as there is reasonable notice ahead of time and as long as you're treating everyone the same, then whatever you decide however it's best to run your business, it's going to meet the Open Meetings Act. Now, there may be some issues with the programming and putting the agenda items in the programming for the kiosk and/or resident, non-resident businesses that certainly will have to be explored. And, and, you know, we may need some time to get that programming done. But certainly I appreciate the sentiment and again, I know it's all designed to make your meetings more productive. When, if, it sounds like there is a consensus here. The vote on these rules, Ms. Britner and I are going to have to, you know, with assistance from Mr. Culpepper, we're going to need to kind of incorporate all of these into a revised rules of procedure and also the agenda booklet. And you're going to have the opportunity to vote on that. So that's really your first opportunity to really to provide some notice to the public. I would recommend if you're going to have a 7:30 cutoff time, that we have a lot of advanced notice because there are people who won't be there for the first meeting or two. So your first meeting or two, you may want to extend that a little bit, just again, to make sure that there's notice. And again, that's, we're going to be putting it in the agenda booklet, it will be out by the kiosks and certainly it would be helpful to read it in a statement that's read before public comment.
If you go, the cutoff is like when you're doing number 17, you're actually telling them what the rules are. You could incorporate a line in there and that could be the cutoff time right there. It gives you a few minutes and you need to wait for a person.
That's a thought. Councilman Fleming?
If you do that, rather than putting the responsibility on an individual out there to say, "We can't take any more names," the kiosk needs to shut down at that time. In other words, you've got a person, if there's a particular time, we've got to be careful about this because otherwise we've got a staff person out there, be it Cindy, whoever, that's pretty vulnerable. If people would say, "I'm standing in line, I want to sign up," it'll be careful that we, we're consistent whatever we do. If we're going to stop at a certain time, the kiosk doesn't allow anyone else at a certain time. Just a thought.
Councilman Henderson?
I like Mr. Campbell's idea, except that sometimes you have proclamations or whatever that might extend. You know, if you get two or three of those, now the time is shifted. So somebody that expects, "Well, I got till 7:35 because of this," typically they get here at 7:40 after you, you know. So I don't know, that, that is a moving target.
Councilman Teetz?
Two, two points. I think 7:30 is fine or some, some 40. I think it needs to be a definitive time. That way, no guess, all the guesswork's out of it. And I would suggest, say 7:45 or when, or when the comments or public comments starts, whichever happens first. But more like it would be 7:45, you have to be signed in by. That way, no one will have the complaint, "Well, I just was working too late at work and didn't realize what time it is." And then the second part being, should we have it be that if you're in line at 7:45, you could still sign in? Because that, that will be an issue at some point in, in the future. And so we may as well deal with that question right now.
Councilman Slater?
Well, you're just thinking off the top of my head. I think we should, if somebody's standing in line, they ought to get an opportunity to speak, you know? So, you know, I think this is kind of like being a police officer and having discretion and writing a ticket. I think you should, whoever's running the kiosk should have the discretion to allow if somebody's standing there to sign up. It could cause more problems than, than we ever would need. I know we do have some police generally in the area, but I think I would be in favor of if we say 7:45 and there's a line that the public gets the opportunity to sign up and you don't, just tell them no.
I think there was some wrong.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to let Cindy have, have some discretion there and if she.
That's why I was, because I agree.
Yeah, so if you say 7:45, we will start the process of shutting down the kiosk or.
7:45 with discretion.
Yeah.
I just think we're going to have problems if we say, you know, somebody's too deep in line.
And I think.
You let one of those people talk and you didn't let one of them talk.
Attorney General? Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that it's clear also that public hearings are a whole different animal and that there is an opportunity for them to comment. And that will remain and it has to remain. So this is only on those non-public hearing items. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay. Any other discussions? Any other items?
I want to bring up something which, which hasn't happened a lot, but when development was occurring, you have petitioners who come forward. Do you expect those petitioners to, to sign up? Or would you just allow them to be there for questions and speak on their matter without signing up? I just want to make sure that we're clear because I know that smart petitioners now look at the agenda, especially if they're local and they're coming for the writing, they might not be here at 7:30. Do you expect them to sign up if they're going to speak?
I wouldn't think they could speak because of the writing.
I would agree with you.